Sorry, thank you.
Start over.
Start over, call to order. So I call to order the regular meeting of the Ojai Planning Commission, and it will be called to order by myself. Mr. Quilisi is joining us online, so he is here, thank you for that. And Sheri, can we get a roll call?
Vice Chair Trent.
Here.
Commissioner Murphy.
Here.
Chair Quilisi, virtual.
Here.
Commissioner Bennett, absent, and one vacancy.
Perfect, thank you Sheri. Alright, Judy, if you don't mind leading us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright.
Well, yeah, they're all turned away from their microphones, that's the problem.
So, next point of call is the approval of the minutes.
Approval of agenda first.
Oh, I'm sorry, approval of agenda. Any discussions, any changes?
Nope.
No changes.
We're good. Alright.
I move approval.
Okay, perfect. I guess we second that?
I'll second it.
Okay.
Perfect. Okay.
Roll call.
Oh, go ahead Sheri, roll call.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Vice Chair Trent?
Yes.
Chair Quilisi.
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Now we'll move on to public.
Commissioner Bennett? Absent.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, sure.
And do we do minutes next? No, we do public communications, right?
Yeah, you do need to read the public communication piece as well.
Alright, so, "Public Communications at this time is set aside during the Planning Committee Planning Commission meeting for members of the public to address the Planning Commission on items of city business other than scheduled agenda items. Matters raised at this time may be briefly discussed by the commission and will generally be referred to staff and replaced on a subsequent agenda under state law other than for emergency items. No action can be taken at this meeting." And I don't have any comment cards.
Anyone in the audience?
Anybody in the audience? Nope, okay, moving on.
Does Sheri have any raised hands out there?
Nope.
Nope, okay, no raised hands. Alright, then we'll move on to consent items. So, all matters listed on the consent calendar are to be considered routine by the governing bodies and will be enacted by one motion in form listed. There will be no discussion of these items unless before the governing body votes on the motion to adopt specific items are removed from the consent calendar for separate motions. So we'll do the minutes of the regular Planning Commission meeting of May 1st. Any changes?
No changes. I move acceptance.
Second.
Alright, thank you. Okay. Now we'll move on to discussion item two, the housing elements, Housing Action Plan Program Discussion, emphasis on objective design standards, number fifteen, preliminary objective design standards. Lucas, do you want to lead us?
Thank you, Vice Chair. Okay, so, this is a preliminary draft objective design standard, standards, and they are up for discussion, and obviously staff welcomes comments on these draft standards. No decision is being made tonight, being asked by, by staff or by this, by this body. There wouldn't be a draft ordinance brought forward before there was any sort of consideration. So really, it's an opportunity for this body and for the community and anybody that's watching from home to provide comments. We welcome those comments, most certainly, and that'll help frame the, the way in which this document unfolds from tonight and then moving forward. We have received some public comment and some of that information as well in, in terms of the information that they provided, so we appreciate that as well. Those will also be taken into consideration moving forward. This will have to come back to Planning Commission before it goes to, to City Council for consideration as an ordinance or as a draft ordinance. This is not a draft ordinance. This, you could almost call this a term sheet to a certain degree. I think that's the comfort level that we're at right now. Everybody knows that, at least in this audience, a term sheet is really just a draft form kind of outlining the thought process for how a document like this is going to potentially be unfolded. So, let me help to set some of the discussion for to, tonight. So, why is this being considered? And I think it's important that we unpack through our housing element programs and more importantly, program number fifteen, as we're going to be focusing on tonight, which talks about and really is requiring for us to have objective design standards in the books as identified in our, in our certified housing element by the end of this year. Which is the reason why we brought this forward in February for discussion and why we're bringing it forward now with some more meat on it, but really, there's more to be done at this point, given the information that we have for tonight for discussion, for consideration. The, the standards themselves are really kind of, are, are meant to help steer some of the design pieces for residential. More for, for residential than it is for commercial. Commercial really, we still have, I would say, a stronghold on the commercial piece of it. Anything that's residential, affordable pieces, mixed use, that then has affordable tied to it, really is where these objective design standards are meant to live. And I think it's important that we also go back and recognize that in October of last year, we had a lot of really good information, I want to say a four and a half hour meeting, where we kind of unpacked the housing laws with this body and with the city attorney, Alex, at that point, and really kind of dove into it. January 1st of this year, there was a whole bunch of new housing laws that came to effect, and then there's more that are coming down the pipeline. So there'll be a 2.0 that'll be coming forward at some point to kind of get this community and this body and City Council potentially up to speed with the moving target that is the housing laws. I also think it's important to, to refresh this body, as well as anybody else that's listening, to what objective means, objective design standards, what that term means. And there is a, a finite definition that's been provided, and I think it's worth repeating, "The objective design standards or objective means involving no person or subjective judgment by a public official and being uniformly verifiable by reference to an external and uniform benchmark or criterion available and knowable by both the development applicant or proponent and the public official." So, in a nutshell, what that means is that if, if it's not numerical or it's not something that a, a regular person or a normal person could look at and say, "Yes, I understand what that means." If there's someone else that says, "I think it means this," that no longer falls within the objective standard and you're, and you're really kind of skating into the subjective piece. We talked about that back in October. That piece has not changed.
Right.
That's still within the parameters of what we're talking about tonight and certainly within the objective standards that we're looking to bring forward in more finite format moving forward. And I think it's also worth noting, and I know I had a question that come in from the community in regards to why some of these pieces were included in this packet. And more specifically, I believe it was the Attachment B, which were the objective standards which were taken from California League of Cities, and more specifically from a commission, a planning commission kind of seminar. And the interesting thing is, is when I, when I did that research and I was trying to figure out kind of what the, what the baseline was that we could be using, what better platform than the California League of Cities and what better platform than using it as a tool that the planning commissioners are, are looking at and kind of visibly seeing through a, through a recent seminar. Now, it was, it was in 2023, March of 2023, but those standards are still relevant even today. So, it seems appropriate and certainly relevant to what we're, what we're doing here. Some of the illustrations, I'm not going to say are the best, but certainly some of them have merit and potentially something we could be plugging into, to our document as well moving forward, as well as other illustrations. So, and also, you know, the, the group that brought forward the presentation, was, it wasn't lengthy by any stretch of the imagination, but was certainly meaty in terms of what we were looking at, was a, a group referred to as WHA, which is William Hesma-Holch Architects. And they're a well-known firm, architecture firm in Southern California, just in California in general. I mean, I've worked on some projects where they've, they've come forward. They do good design in the right context, in the right setting, obviously. But I think for, for what they were looking at here, they were identifying that, hey, from a, from a role standpoint, just understand from a commissioner's standpoint, this is, this is, these are the standards that you must live within. So, and I, I think the presentation that was, was attached to this, to the staff report, does a really good job of kind of setting the table from that standpoint. The, the objective, the, the preliminary draft objective design standards that you have in your packet is really meant for a discussion piece, kind of a kickoff piece. We can go point by point, we can go by heading. If you have general questions, we can certainly open that up for discussion. Point of order typically with these items, you ask questions of staff and then we open it up for the public and then there, then the deliberation. I prefer that we stay in that format.
Yep.
Just for ease of purpose.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So with that, I, I open the floor.
Okay, cool. Well, I know Steve's got questions. Thank you for forwarding those on, Steve, I appreciate that. I have some questions too. So, I don't know, do you want to start with yours, Steve?
Doesn't matter, John, go ahead. Why don't you?
Yeah, okay, I'll, I'll go ahead and I'll start. So, I guess when we're looking at page one of the administrative report, and I thank you for that summary, that was, that was great. So, our housing element was recently certified, right? I just wanted to highlight that.
Yes.
Okay, so we are, we are in compliance with HCD?
Yes.
Yes, so we're good to go.
As of July 7th?
July 7th.
Something like that, 2023.
Okay. And, and we are looking to heighten our objective standards, just to make sure there's clarity and everybody understands exactly what we're, what we're trying to tackle here. One of my questions is, why did we, and I, I know you went to the League of Cities, but have we looked at any other cities that are in similar population to Ojai or similar size? Like, I'm just thinking off the top of my head, like Bealton, Carpinteria, Solvang. I mean, Temecula's pretty big. I think it's like
Yeah, Temecula's much larger, yes. So Gilroy was used because that was of a similar size, but, to your point, well, yes and, and no. I mean, looking at the objective, objective standards, it kind of fits within the, the wheelhouse of, of potentially what we're looking at, at doing here. But to your point, Bealton and, and Solvang are probably good examples if they have objective design standards at this point.
Yeah, they're about the same size as we are.
Yeah, we could always, I could always take a look at those. Staff could certainly.
Carpinteria's a little bigger, but they're, they're kind of right in that.
Yeah, Carpinteria is, is slightly larger, but it's still within our, our range, within our area.
So, anyway, just something to consider as we look forward.
Certainly.
Cool, and let's see. So are we talking about the, did we want to go over the Attachment A line by line, similar to what we've done before?
Well, I think it's actually Attachment D.
The attach, well, I have Attachment A.
A, A is the plan, C I think is the draft.
Yeah.
Yeah, D is, D is the, Ojai's objective design standards.
Because I know, I know Steve had some, some general questions on Attachment A, and I don't know if we want to tackle that first.
We can go through it. I mean, the, the thing about Attachment A is it's the same document that we've continually recirculated and identified kind of the points that we're going to hit on first.
Right.
And I have no problem going through any of those pieces and maybe rearranging or having the discussion on rearranging some of those. Certainly, we can do that too.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I think maybe we go in kind of the order. Steve, did you want to start with some of your questions or?
My pleasure, John.
Okay.
You, you mentioned in the staff report that we're concentrating on Programs Five and Fifteen tonight. I'd like to ask a couple of questions about Program Four before we get to Program Five. This is on Attachment A, page one, Program Four, Objective Two. It, obviously that's, Objective Two is out of date, but we had to wait for the certification of the housing element, I think. So that looks good, but is 10-2-17-09, the ADU ordinance, as it stands? It, it, is it compliant with state law?
No. No, it needs to be, it needs to be revised.
Okay. Same with Objective Three, which was develop a program to monitor the city, whether the city is on track to meet the ADU construction goals. And I wasn't, I wasn't aware, I guess, or, or forgot that there were ADU construction goals. I know we have RENA numbers and, and we want to, you know, establish a certain amount of affordable housing, but do we have goals that presumably not from the state to create ADUs? But we have internal goals to create some number of ADUs during this cycle?
I, I don't know that, I mean, it is a goal. I think the, the reality is, is I think within the eight years, we're, we're not mandated, but staying within the wheelhouse of 120. So that, that magic number is 120, which is, what, 15 a year? Is that the math? So, the reality is, is we are tracking that. We're tracking that through the annual progress report, the APR that we send out every year. But on top of that, we're, we're tracking it every month through building permits. So we're seeing that on a regular basis. I mean, I just checked in with Sheri this morning on it, our staff, and she's identified that just in this month alone, we already have 12.
Oh wow, cool.
I'm sorry. For the month previous.
Right.
We already had 12, and we haven't finished that month out, meaning calculating for, because we just started this, this next month for June. We haven't, we haven't closed out. So we're already at 12, and typically, mind you, this is for the entire year. For that month alone, we're already sitting at about 12. So typically, for the, for the entire year for ADUs, and that's compliance units, that's ADUs, that's junior ADUs, and at one point, we were looking at tiny homes, but tiny homes have been paused while we look at that ordinance revision. Last year it was 29, the year before that was 25.
Right.
So our number, our magic number in terms of staying above water is 15. We're easily making, making that. But I would say this, with that, and I think it's important for the community to hear this as well, that number isn't always going to be high. I mean, at some point, we're going to hit a threshold where the number's going to start going down.
Right.
And I think recognizing that, that could be by year 2029, suddenly it's like 12.
Sure.
But we've already had all that good work the first couple of years that we can have a couple of subpar years and still be okay.
And, and you did address that in, in the, in the Item Three, mentioning that the ADUs trends do go down, we can reevaluate, you can look at doing SPL overlays, et cetera, to, to help with that.
Yeah, I mean, those are, those are like worst-case scenarios.
Right, but we do mention.
And, and building ADUs or legalizing ADUs is not necessarily related to building or legalizing affordable housing, correct?
Yeah, there's no earmark or deed restriction requirement or covenant that's required to be placed on them.
Okay.
But they are considered affordable housing.
They get to fit within the box that we get to count, yes.
Correct.
They, they're affordable by design, so they're at least moderate?
Right.
They're assumed to be moderate?
And since, and since we put this in here, since the eight years, since 2022, how many ADUs have we built, do you know? Or how many have been permitted?
Since 2022, so, last year it was, it was 25.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, two years ago it was 25, this last year it was 29.
Okay.
So.
Okay, okay.
We're almost half of what we need to be
Right.
in, in a two-year span.
Yeah.
We're going to hit the mark.
Yeah.
I don't see any issues with that, but we put that in there in the, in the event that the, the trend started going down sooner than anticipated.
The 120 figure was for the entire, for the sixth cycle of the housing element, yeah.
So we're on target. Okay.
Oh, easily. For ADUs, yes.
Yeah, and, and I know this was a question that came up by one of the community members about looking at the potential of unpermitted ADUs, because there's a consensus that there's quite a few unpermitted ADUs that might qualify as ADUs. I, I don't know, but.
Yeah, that's part of the compliance program. So they have to voluntarily come forward.
Okay, so we don't have anything where we're proactively going out?
And, and looking for these?
Yeah.
No.
No.
No, not at this point.
Got it. But if we find them, those will count towards our ADU numbers?
Well, if we find them, then we look at how we get them in compliance.
Yeah.
That's really what it boils down to. And compliance program is the, alright, so, kind of a fun little fact. The government code didn't have, government code meaning state, California government code, didn't have anything in regards to compliance program, ADU, ADUs basically.
Right.
But it does now.
Yeah, yeah.
It has a little section that's, that covers it.
Right.
Ojai doesn't get any credit for that. We've had this in, in place for a number of years.
Right.
And I would say to a certain degree, we're instrumental in, in achieving this. I'd never heard of it before I came here. And it didn't exist before I came here in 2019, and now all of a sudden I'm seeing it mysteriously in the government code. I don't think that's by coincidence or by design, so.
Very cool. Awesome. Judy, you have any questions on that one?
No.
No, alright.
They were answered.
Alright. Steve, did you want to move on to your next one?
Yes, please. Now we're on to Attachment A, page two, Program Five. The first objective is promote affordable units and ADU programs. And I'm wondering, what's the general plan for staff to promote affordable units and ADUs?
Actually, I think we have something on our website now. I think I had one of the staff members work on, on information that helps to just provide general informa, just provide general information that's related to this particular item. Now, the tiny home pilot program piece is on hold because it sunsetted at the end, like November of 2023. So now we're looking at reprogramming it. This body has seen it twice, and this will be the third time coming this next meeting with the draft ordinance. So, it's definitely trending in the right direction. The tiny home pilot program is actually looking at going above and beyond what was even initially anticipated. When this was written in 2021 and then some modifications up until 2023, even at that point, it wasn't perceived that the tiny home pilot program would then become potentially something that was more permanent versus a two-year sunset piece.
Are the, the, the City Hall Parking Lot Homeless, the grant that we have for that, is that for tiny homes?
So the way in which it's being worded is it's a tiny home pilot, like, program, but that's a completely different bucket. Nothing to do with what we're talking about here for this tiny home program. Because that itself has, has its own parameters and standards that, that it must follow. Which is different than, than the homeless encampment piece, which is being framed as a tiny home.
Why would those tiny homes be different? I mean, why is it a different bucket? I'm confused.
Yeah, that's a great question for the state, but the reality is, is that it gets earmarked into, into different categories because the funding is different. With the tiny homes themselves, it's typically funded privately.
Right.
With what we're looking at within the parking lot and then potentially being repurposed and relocated somewhere else, either in the city or just outside the city's jurisdictions, that's a completely different bucket of money
Okay.
and a completely different process. City attorney, I think, wants to add in some stuff to it.
That type of, hello?
Hello.
Taylor, it's nice to meet all of you. Chair, it'll be nice to meet you in person when you're here. The tiny homes related to our friends experiencing homelessness is considered more, it's in the shelter bucket versus affordable housing. And the money, the grant funding attached to that is focused on solving the homelessness problem, which is different than the requirements that we're talking about today. Does that make more sense? I know, I know it's frustrating, but they, they are different buckets, and because it's grant-funded, there are strings attached to that.
Okay.
That it just, we can't count it towards this pool.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyway, back, back to my question. I think what staff is saying is the approach right now is to publicize to individuals and other developers, potential developers, the availability of the program and the city's desire to make it possible to develop more affordable homes and also ADUs. Is that about right? It's not, not like the city is spending money on ADUs per se.
No, yeah, I agree. 100%. And actually, can we just pause for a minute?
Okay.
I feel like a bit of a, I did not mention or introduce Taylor Anderson.
No, that's true. We didn't have an official.
I had meant to do that in the beginning, and then we just got lost in, in the typical ceremony stuff that we do in the beginning. Taylor Anderson is, is stepping in for Thais. Thais isn't necessarily stepping down, but she's being, she's taking on different roles. Well, no, she's still with, she's still going to be with the, the company, right? I don't know, you, maybe you should need to speak to that.
Yes.
Yes?
Staying at the firm, staying with Ojai, but just not at, not as Planning Commission Counsel anymore. So Taylor will be taking that over. She's awesome. She's great, you're in great hands.
Just won't see you coming up here from Irvine.
Can you tell us what, can you tell us what you'll be doing?
I have more employment law in the firm.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Cool.
But I did want to just, since I have this quick moment, thank you Commissioners and Chair for allowing me to represent you for these past few months. It's been really great. I've really enjoyed it.
Well, you've been great to work with.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
We appreciate you.
And welcome, Taylor.
Thank you. I'm excited to work with everybody.
Yeah, it'll be great.
Make the drive.
Yeah, Long Beach.
Oh dear.
It'll be great.
Before we continue this discussion,
Yes.
Taylor, like 30 seconds, son. Just kind of give the 30-second background on you.
On me? So I came, I came from in-house counsel at the City of Long Beach. I was there for over seven years.
Little bit bigger city than us.
Little bit bigger city, but huge variety of problems. So, I'm used to being nimble and being able to deal with things. My background is focused a lot on governmental ethics. I've worked a lot with Elections Clerk's Office. I have background, some background in planning, but I wear a lot of different hats and I'm used to wearing a lot of different hats, so I'll be supporting that, not just with Planning Commission, but through other things in the city too.
Oh, good.
So yeah, I'm looking forward to, to working with y'all. I heard nothing but great things, so I know I have big shoes to fill with Thais. So thank you.
Welcome, welcome aboard. Thank you for doing.
Ojai's a long drive, but it's worth it.
Yeah. Thanks for the, the moment, that was good.
I meant to do that in the beginning, but I completely spaced.
Don't even worry about it. I was happy to like blend in to the furniture.
I loved how you just jumped on in, though. That was fantastic. That was great.
Thank you.
Well, good deal. Alright, I apologize. Go ahead, Mr. Quilisi. I know we are kind of moving on to the next bucket items.
No, no trouble at all.
Oh, actually.
I, I wanted to, to, since the city is not allowed to spend money to build ADUs or affordable housing, we, we have to depend on others, and I'm, I'm concerned about, we have two kinds of developers here, it appears in the city right now, those that are willing to develop affordable housing and with their own money, and those that depend on state grants. And I'm just wondering if you, if you know how things are going? The, the state's kind of short of money at the moment, and the bulk of the approved affordable housing been through the, through the commission and the council, I believe, is, other than a couple of things that we've seen, is all depending on state money. Do you have any feel yet for what's going to happen there?
That's a big question.
That's a loaded question, but here's, here's probably the best way I can respond to that. It depends.
Yes.
It's really what it boils down to. I, but here's the thing, there are, like, the project on Bryant Street, that's dependent on, on a number of, of different buckets of funds that are all really kind of state-related. But.
The one at Franklin is the same, I think.
The, Franklin I don't think is the same. I think that's the same bucket, because that's, that's a private developer that has private money. And plus, we're, we've already got an MOU that's gone through City Council on that, on that front. But a lot more discussion with the community on that one. That one still, still has to go through the process and through this body too. The settlement agreement projects, those are all privately funded, so there's not a dime being spent through.
Right, that's, that's going to work fine, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Another part of Program Five, Objective Two, this is still on Attachment A, page two. Another part of Program Five, Objective Two, this is still on Attachment A, page two. It says, "Develop a monitoring program to evaluate the city's pilot program goals." And I think that's what you were talking about earlier. Movable tiny homes have always seemed to me like they present a considerable upfront cost to individual parcel owners. And I'm just curious, at this point, up, up to now, what's your experience with that? What do you hear from potential applicants for movable tiny homes?
Oh.
Not very active at the moment, is my impression.
That, well, here, I, it's, it's, there's two, there's two currently. I mean, we had, what, five applications? Two that ended up moving forward, the other three ended up withdrawing because, not necessarily because of the cost of the tiny homes themselves. It was actually the process by which we had imposed onto them.
Oh, we talked about that.
Right, with that, the two-year pilot program. So, you know, the first meeting that we had, I want to say it was last year, we talked about, we kind of unpacked what those issues were. And in the second meeting, we kind of presented some of the ideas of how we moved forward. And I thought we had some really good feedback at that last meeting, which is the reason why we're bringing forward a draft ordinance with this next meeting, which I believe is gonna be, at the, actually at the next meeting, so middle of June. The, the reality is, is the cost isn't necessarily the units themselves, although there are some costs, some hard costs, which just are, are what they are. The frustration existed with the process by which we had sent them through. And some of that was imposed by, by this, not by this body, because it actually ended up through city council with the pilot program. And so that was the biggest deterrent. And I think we talked about that a couple of meetings ago and just recently. So that's, we're ironing that out, and that was something that council had given us direction to, to take a closer look at. Getting rid of the red tape, essentially.
Okay, yeah, alright. Excuse me. Uh, moving on to Program Fifteen, which is on page three of Attachment A. There we are. Says periodically review the design guidelines to ensure they're objective, basically. And I, I confess, I have not read every word of the three or four design guideline books that the city has right now. But they're, they're not all consistent, but have you found particular things about the design guidelines that we have right now that you feel are insufficiently objective, let's say? I know it's not just putting a number on something, because you can, you can be unrealistic with numbers as well as realistic or fair. So, you know, are there, if, if you were to talk in general, Lucas, about the design guidelines, and I think there's East End Downtown.
Arcade, there's, there's a number of them. There's like four or five of them, yeah.
Arcade or Downtown, right?
Yep.
And
Plaza.
Are there, are there things in there that you could just quickly point to that you're suggesting we make more objective and how?
Yeah, I would say every single one of them have issues, yes. And that's, look.
They're old.
From a, well, some of them are, yeah, twenty, fifteen, twenty-two.
I mean, we see things like the phrase mission revival architecture. That sounds subjective to me, unless you specify it means stucco outside walls with a certain palette of colors and barrel tile roof and other things. I don't know. How, how do, what's the general approach to trying to make those design guidelines more objective?
Yeah, so if you're, if all you're doing is you're identifying the architectural theme, that's not gonna be enough. It's too subjective. But
Right.
tying in those specific pieces or giving a menu and saying, "Out of these five, pick three." That's where the objective piece comes into play, alright?
Okay.
Right now, just generally saying, "It's gotta have an architectural theme that's bungalow." Not enough. There's too many different elements that could be plugged in there that would still meet that.
Or Craftsman, yeah, okay.
Or Craftsman style, or colonial, right? English Tudor. Not enough. It's gotta be more specific and tied directly to that design style, and giving a menu, a menu of, of options to choose from.
Okay. I, I liked in Attachment C, well, we'll come back to Attachment C maybe later. I'll, I'll yield back to the vice chair for the moment.
Yeah, let's make sure, just for the, for the, for the vice chair and for the commission, focus just on the questions for right now, and then we can get into the comment piece after we've had, heard from the public as well.
Yeah, absolutely.
Alright, good.
Yeah, we'll, we'll follow that same format. So Judy, any additional questions you have for staff? I know Steve still has a few to get through. I think we'll come back to those, but I wanted to.
If, if we're, are we still doing this?
Yeah, Steve, Steve had some questions around this, and I, I did too. I mean, I think they're great questions to kind of elaborate on and just touch base on where things are at.
And sixteen, do we have any rehab success stories?
We're talking about, so the, the description says, "Continue the city's housing rehabilitation, rehabilitation program, but target assistance to address code enforcement issues with the goal of rehabbing sixteen units over the planning period."
Have there been any applications to do that?
Zero, at this point.
Yeah.
Hitting that sixteen mark is gonna be kind of tough. I'm just gonna be, I may be completely honest.
And the city puts no money into this and just encourages people to do it?
Correct.
Is that the?
Correct.
Okay.
The, there are a couple of co-compliance cases right now that we're working on. I mean, obviously, I can't disclose those, but we're working towards compliance, so maybe less than a handful that we're working on right now.
Okay.
Well, there was a, there was a project two or three years ago on Lion Street where, where a small house was, was rehabbed, and it looks great now. So it can be done, and it has been done here in the city.
Yeah, that one, the only thing about that one is it was before this sixth cycle. It was during the fifth cycle.
Ah.
Yeah.
I know which one you're talking about, though.
Yeah.
Anything else on this?
Okay.
That sixteen is just a goal.
It is a goal.
You don't make it.
And we report each year through the A P R, the annual progress report. So it's ongoing.
Okay.
If ones come up, then we take credit for them and we identify it and trickle down, essentially.
Yeah.
Okay, cool. Well, I didn't have any other further questions on the, on the update, so I appreciate that, unless you had anything, Lucas, that you wanted to add on for this? No? Okay, cool. Alright, we'll move on. I think there, we wanted to quickly discuss. I know Steve had some questions on the Temecula examples. So did we want to start getting into some of this? Well, we'll wait till discussion for, I guess, just talking about things in general, but Steve, do you want to ask your question on the Temecula example?
Yeah, this is now on Attachment C. Temecula's examples of various architectural styles are interesting, and maybe the details that they include in there are, are along the lines of, of what staff would like to do with the current code. They're, they're clear and enforceable, though, only if everyone agrees that a particular project is a particular style. And so how do we, how do we get to the point that either staff defines a project as a particular style, or an applicant does, and the, and, and the city has to agree? How do you do that? It's, it's a matter of what's, what's the process? Let's, let's say we get to the point where we have what we all consider to be objective standards that go with a particular architectural style. How do we then come to agreement with a developer on what the style of a proposed project is? Is that something for the commission to decide?
No, it's something for the objective design standards to identify. So it's, it's a choice, essentially. So if we're saying for, for the residential piece that we're talking about here, and the mixed-use piece that we're talking about here as well, the affordable component piece that we're talking about here, all within the same bucket. If the design standard that's identified happens to be Spanish, and we identify that it has to be, you know, a rolled barrel tile at the top, and they have to be a certain dimension, then that is, that's the, that's the standard by which they have to live by, if they choose that design standard. If there's another design standard that's, that's identified within this objective design standards ordinance, then it's, if you're choosing this as a design standard, then you must fit within this parameter. Col- like a colonial, like, if it's two-story, you gotta make sure the windows are certain dimensions.
Right.
Something, something along those lines, or the flashing must be two inches on, like, the detail is important in, in these cases. But in terms of saying they are required to go in this direction versus this direction, it becomes a menu of options for the, for the developer at that point versus pointing them in, in one direction.
That's what Temecula is doing. Is that where we're going?
Potentially.
And what if a builder, a, a private person constructing their own residence doesn't want to pick any of those styles?
So single-family residential does not comply. This is multifamily.
Okay.
So single, so for instance, when we've had projects come forward, we still use the four pillars. That is still on the table. Single-family is still on the, on the table. We have, at least at this point, we have full jurisdiction. Now, if a project comes forward that is a tract development, it's a tract map that then has multiple, um, single-family homes coming forward, that's a different, that's a different beast. But like, just as an example, there was a project on Ayers that we took forward, that this body saw. We weren't applying objective design standards. We were, we were applying the design standards within our code, and we're using the four pillars. Very subjective. Right?
Yep.
My, my thought on, on the design guidelines, then, is that as, as the staff puts these together in a proposal, that the, the details of the standards or various architectural styles su- should be, as, I'll say, as disjoint as possible. If you had two different architectural styles in the guidelines, and they both had barrel tile roof and stucco on the outside, then you're in for some confusion as to what to call a particular project. But if you can structure such that the, the different architectural styles are all different in their details, then you can let the, the developer pick one, or the staff can pick one, but at least there's not gonna be confusion about what, what sense, sense of designs, guidelines we need to use.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm sure there's architectural, you know, guidelines that we can use.
I mean, I've, yeah, I've seen Spanish. I've seen mission revival. I'm not sure how those are different. And if those are two of our architectural styles, I anticipate some confusion about which one to use, if the details are different.
Yeah, I guess, I guess a question would be, obviously, we'd probably consult with an architect, or somebody would have those, yeah, those are sort of architectural guidelines to, to differentiate.
And I, let's not call them guidelines. Let's make sure we're referring to them as standards. So I, you're right, the, you're kind of splitting hairs between two Spanish style, Mediterranean would be another example. Look, the reality is, is that you're splitting hairs with those different types of styles. You call it, you fit it within a bucket of Spanish versus colonial versus bungalow versus English Tudor.
Right.
Also, just looking at the neighborhood and the surrounding area to see what, what, what was the last one you said?
Farm Ranch?
Farm, House Ranch, yes. Yes, yes, that one.
Yeah, yeah.
That one's kind of a new age one that's just recently surfaced in terms of saying, "Oh, look, it's old, but it's new." It's like revival, right?
Yeah, yeah.
That, that kind of thing. You put revival next to it, and suddenly it's fresh and new, right? So.
Okay.
Yeah, I, look, these standards can be written a number of different ways, but the important pieces are what we've put together for this, this commission and for the community to kind of soak in, that it, we can't have any subjectivity to it. Right? So if we are moving in directions on certain styles, let's just make it very clear.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
Clarity is our friend in this case.
Yeah. And, and what we're talking about today is more the baseline, not necessarily the, this architectural standards that we're looking to.
But no, the architectural standards from, from a, on a, on an objective standpoint will definitely be baked into here.
Oh, yeah, for sure. But I mean, this doesn't encompass, encompass some of those architectural standards.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct. But well.
I mean, I mean, according to like, you know, overall look and feeling the aesthetics of it all.
Right.
Yeah.
I get what you're saying.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, cool.
Okay, great. Thank you, Lucas.
Alright, well, let's move on to, uh, did you have, did you have any questions on, on the examples that we have? Yeah, that might mean, my only two questions were, hey, let's look at some smaller cities.
And well taken. And we can, I can reach out to Buellton, and I have a couple of, of planners that I know in Sullivan, so I can reach out to them too.
Yeah, because they, they, they have the same sort of impacts that, you know, we, we are faced with too. You know what I mean?
I would almost say looking at, uh, maybe even slow, maybe not necessarily Santa Maria, but Santa Maria's a little bit too big.
Yeah.
But there could be some options and some opportunity there.
Yeah.
Even Santa Paula's four times our size.
Right. It's true. It doesn't take much to be larger than us.
We don't have a whole lot of good examples in Ventura County, that's for sure. Okay, so let's move on to Attachment D. And Steve, did you want to kick it off? And then I, I have a couple after Steve.
Yeah, just pulling up, pulling up Attachment D here. Um, on the first page, item one A two, under architectural standards, we've still got that word compatible in there. That seems like in the, in the eye of the beholder, and I don't know what to do with it.
Well, we certainly don't use it moving forward. Compatible is too subjective. I agree.
Right, yeah, okay. And adjacent must mean more than just parcels abutting the parcel in question. It, it must mean, you know, nearby residential structures.
I mean, even, even adjacent residential structures is too, is too general. It's not, it's not identifying a specific style. It's not, it's not doing enough to meet that test, the test that's been identified, um, and we've discussed. So it, I agree. It, there's some retooling for number two.
If, if you have a fair variety of tightly defined styles, and you have analyzed the adjacent residential structures as to their styles, then, and, and you have some rule about what's compatible with what, then that sta- that statement will still work, but that's a lot of work to, to get to that point.
Fair point.
I'm sorry, what happened to public input?
Oh, we're still in questioning. Yeah, yeah. No worries. Yeah, we'll, we'll come, we'll come to questions.
Trying, trying to understand, that's all. Uh, on, on page two, looks like we still have a, a physical impossibility. This is an item three C two. Talks about the center line of the driveways shall be separated by a minimum of fifty feet. Depends on the size of the lot you're talking about, but there are gonna be lots that you can't put two driveways on with that separation. So I think that's an area that
Well, to be, to be fair, it actually, it actually kind of doesn't make, it's an objective standard. Now, it's up for discussion in terms of whether or not it's, it merits being placed into here, but let me just give you a scenario. If this is a community that doesn't necessarily want to see a lot of two driveway entrances within the city, then applying a standard like this ensures that only the um, within the city, then applying a standard like this ensures that only the larger lots that have that distance requirement can then have the, the two, the two driveway piece. And that 50-foot minimum, now, I'll, looking at this, the foot, foot thing is something that we fixed during the errata, but that's something we can address here. There potentially is merit to having it, but at the same time, I leave it to this body and to the community to, to, to weigh in on whether or not that's, that's merited. It really, it depends on the lot size at that point.
A 50-foot lot, wide lot would only be allowed one driveway and, uh,
I mean, otherwise they wouldn't have a yard.
Two would be crazy on a 50-foot lot. But so this would accomplish that, and it's definitely objective. The question is, is it a hindrance to building affordable housing?
I, I would argue no.
Yeah, okay. Let me see, page two, page three, item 5A says dusk to dawn lighting. Does this mean that, that all new homes must have lights on all night, every night? Did I, did I misread that?
Yeah, I, I, I noticed that as well. Yeah, I think we need a little clarity. Like, is that, is that for, you know, homes? Is that just more for homes that are in the public right of way? Or there's areas that are in the public right of way, or?
Yeah, the detail is lacking for sure in that area.
So I might be able to add some value here. Lighting from dusk to dawn, um, there's code enforcement, not code enforcement. There are planning standards to prevent crime. This is one of those spaces where lighting and cameras is beneficial as a deterrent for criminal activity. Like having a well-lit property of, and I'm, I'm sure it's less of a problem in this area, but, um, it prevents, in all of the spaces that are noted here are spaces where there's opportunity for criminal activity to occur. So it can act as a deterrent. You can add planning features like, um, trimming back hedges, lighting, security cameras to avoid those opportunities.
Is that for multi-residential properties?
That's right. This is, this is not for, single, single family.
It, it doesn't matter. It's both for single-family residents and multifamily. There are opportunities that you can take widened streets, um, art in, art in the community. There are things that you can do that deter criminal activity.
It, would it be a requirement that you have this or i- is that what you're saying?
It's a good idea to have this as a criminal deterrent is what I'm saying.
What if your property's in a very rural part of town and?
We can look into that and see if it's some, I don't think it, we'll look into whether it's required or not. I know that this is why this type of lighting is required. Do you know what I mean? Like, the intent of this lighting.
I understand the purpose. I guess I'm struggling here with how broadly do you apply this?
Well, so we can look into that and come back with an answer of whether or not you have opportunity to narrow the scope of this requirement.
Yeah, I mean, one, one thought that I have, just to kind of build on what Taylor was talking about. I mean, there's a criminal piece, but then also recognizing that we've got the dark skies, that we also have an opportunity to kind of regulate some of that illumination piece. Like, uh, like reducing and even identifying the, the candle, um, piece from.
Candle power, yeah.
Yeah, from a, from a distance standpoint. There's, the nice thing is, is we can still be objective and still accomplish uh, some of that dark sky, um, pieces, um, within 16.5.
Yeah, and I, and I think, I think looking at, yeah, where it goes, where it applies is, is a, is a big one. Cause I could see it, you know, applying in certain aspects of downtown Ojai, but that's a very small little band, you know, but.
Yeah, if I can, and if I can back it out just for a minute, does lighting make sense to put in here? Cause if it doesn't, then we take it out. If it does, then we can certainly go granular with some of this.
Well, I like, I like B and C. I think B and C makes sense.
Oh, sorry. Oh, darn it. Yeah, see, this is why Tais is here. She always sets me straight. Questions only, and then we can get into deliberation.
Good deal. Okay, cool. All right, Steve, you want to continue? And I, I think Judy and I will jump in.
Yes, please, just, uh, go, go ahead, Judy.
No, I.
We'll, we'll jump in when you're done.
Oh, okay. Um, the next one on the same page, page three, uh, item six, it's talking about trim around windows and doors, which seemed an odd thing to stick in here. And you've got numbers, but three and a half inch, not less than three and a half inches for the trim around windows and doors, um, seems oddly wide. And I'm, I'm just wondering where that came from.
I think it leads into some of the design piece, um, components. If you have more trim, you have more depth. Um, if you have more depth to the window, it doesn't feel as flat. So how do you achieve that? Putting something like this in as a standard, as an objective standard.
And foam trim molding is prohibited on the ground floor. That's because the ground floor is more susceptible to moisture or what's going on?
What is foam trim molding? Let's start there.
There's stuff called MDF, medium density foam, that's often used for baseboards and trim in lieu of regular wood.
Do you want my theory?
I presume that's what you're talking about.
You know, my, my theory and probably practice as to why? If you have on the first floor, anything that nicks it, like even landscapers that are doing weed eating and a piece of dirt or a stick hits it, it'll immediately dent it. And that doesn't go away.
And this is strictly for outdoor trim, not indoor, right?
No, this is outdoor. When, this, this is all outdoors. Yeah, yeah, this is all outdoors.
Okay, uh, page six, under H walls required, it, I think we need, I, I, I suspect we need some more detail. Because in H1A and H2, we have the phrase constructed on the zone boundary line. I'm, I, I suspect what you mean is constructed on the parcel for which the new construction is proposed and immediately adjacent to the property line, or something like that. Is that, is that the meaning here? You don't want to put a wall on the zone boundary line. You put it on one side or the other, presumably on the side that you're proposing new construction.
Well, to, to take it even a step further, I don't like the subjective piece that it's subject to the approval of the director. I don't like that. That doesn't, that feels pretty subjective at that point. So there are, there's some tweaking to that language. I agree with you 100%.
Right. And on the, the constructing phrase, I, I, I think it, it needs a little more clarity. Finally, page seven and eight, this is setbacks, 9A. 9A1, it refers to standard dwellings. I don't know what that means, and I'm hoping you can enlighten us. You mean existing dwellings? Do you mean conforming dwellings? Or do you mean legal dwellings, conforming or not conforming? Not sure what, uh, what that phrase means.
Where are you, Steve? Are you on page seven? Item nine?
Seven and eight, item 9A1, phrase standard dwellings. I don't, I don't understand what that means, and I'm hoping for some clarification.
I'm just reading it real quick here to.
Yeah, sure.
See if I can make sense of it. I do think, so where standard dwellings within one block vary from the required setback, the average setback of such standard dwelling shall determine the required setback within the block if the standard dwellings comprise at least 60% of the block. To be fair, I don't know, we would have to define standard dwelling if it isn't defined within here already. Just to have a baseline. And it's not.
I checked the code. It doesn't look like it's defined.
Yeah, so that's, that's already a challenge because we've got to have something to turn to. So there's some work on this one that needs to be done. I think what this one is trying to do from a front yard setback standpoint is if there is an average by which they can be drawn from, and it's given through a percentage, those are all, those are all objective. That works. But there's not enough information here for, for someone to say, okay, we're all on the same page with, with this. Standard dwelling be, just by the simple fact that it's not defined, um, begins to create confusion.
What is a reverse corner lot?
Putting this 60% uh, figure in there leads me to believe that sometimes you will count a particular dwelling in the area and sometimes you won't. Depending on whether it's a standard dwelling or not a standard dwelling. That's the clarification.
Yeah, and maybe, maybe standard dwelling isn't the right term to use in this case.
It, it might be referring to non-ADU since ADU has different setback requirements.
Well, we're tall, all talking about multifamily houses here, not single-family.
Well, to, to the attorney's point, primary is what we use throughout the code. And standard isn't really used. So I think there needs to be some unpacking. Getting back to Commissioner Murphy's question, uh, which is a very loaded question, but I will repeat it. What is a reverse corner lot?
I thought that was rather.
There is a lot of debate on what a reverse corner lot is amongst the planners. And not only in this city, but I would say nationwide. Can I, can I just pause on that and have the, have the community? Cause I would like to give you the, I'd like to give you what the definition is in our code. And then unpack how planners typically try to work through this. There's a lot to unpack by that, by that simple question. Um, cause it's very complicated.
I'm sorry.
It's okay, it's okay. Um, I appreciate the question. But I'll get you an answer. Just give me paused for a moment, okay?
All right.
Okay.
Yeah. Going down to the next item of side yard. On number one, it shall not be less than three feet and not exceed five feet in width. I, those are interesting parameters to throw in. I am struggling with that. Uh, the question is, are those accurate parameters? Is, is that an intentional or an accident?
It's, the title is side yard. I'm not really sure where this, where this standard came from because it shall not be less than three feet. So the question is, is this, is this an appropriate standard? From an objective standpoint, it meets the test.
It does, but it doesn't make sense.
Is it, is it reasonable in terms of the standard that we're asking for here? Does it meet the, does it meet the, the, the intent of it having a quantitative piece?
Why would you, yeah. Why would you limit it to five feet?
Well.
I mean, a side yard might be.
It shall not be less than three. But guess what? So we've given you a floor. It's three feet. And we've given you a ceiling, which is five feet.
The ceiling shouldn't be there.
Well, I, here, okay, so maybe.
I mean.
So need not exceed means you don't have to do more than five, but you could.
But it says not exceed five feet in width.
Okay, that, that whole thing has to be rewritten. I, I mean, if we can't figure it out.
Yeah, I agree.
Just putting, just putting numbers in it doesn't make it objective. You could, you could say multifamily dwellings cannot be taller than five feet. That's subjective, but it means you can't build any.
Yeah, it's just, uh, it's very narrow. It'd be less than three and not exceed five. Interesting. Yeah, I think we need to re, re, relook at that one.
Oh, it says need not exceed. That doesn't, that doesn't limit you to five feet. It says you need not exceed it, but you could.
Vice Chair Trent, this is getting into.
Yeah, deliberation versus question.
So let's, uh, let's move on. Steve, you got a couple more. I know the public wants to comment on a couple of items.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm done at the moment, John. Thank you very much.
Yeah, the questions could turn into discussion.
Yeah, yeah, we can.
Let's go to public comment. I know I've got a couple of members that have to leave here.
Mr. Miley, I believe, oh, so any, anything else, Judy? I have nothing else either. I think we'll move on. Okay. So, Mr. Miley, for a public comment? Yeah, yeah.
Hello.
Lucas, you'll do the timer.
Quick comment about Program Five, tiny homes on wheels. I am and have been strongly against. Small modular homes are better. They're cheaper and larger. Okay. Um, I understand what we're talking about tonight does not apply to single-story family houses, right? If they're two stories, it applies. Is that right?
Can I respond to that?
Yes.
Yes. Uh, two-story comes before this body and is still subjective.
Okay.
Then our design standards. Can be objective. We have no objective standards. It's subjective.
Thank you. I read everything. It turns out that I didn't read the last section D. I went to the code and looked up Title 10 and read that, which is obviously not in detail. Okay, here are my concerns. Our current standards, they seem to, they look like they can be tightened up pretty well. I read over the League of California Cities, WHA document, and also the chart defining it, defining objectivity. Gilroy and Temecula cities are really large. Temecula is 100,000. I don't want to see a uniform town like Santa Barbara here. I would like, and suggest, you go through our current standards and objectivize them, each one as they are now. It seems like Gilroy and Temecula are very organized and tight, somewhat authoritarian and autocratic. I would like to see less detail on standards and more opportunity for architectural innovation and creativity by the developers, with the commission to have some opportunity to accept and support innovation rather than measure it. Yes or no? Finally, please allow commission opportunity, commissioners' opportunity to encourage and support creativity in our town so everything isn't measured, yes or no, black and white. Thanks.
Thank you, Bill. All right, Nick, I have you up next.
My name's Nick Otway. I'm a local architect. I applaud your, your strength of will to dive into these waters. They've been murky for the 50 years I've been working with them. Yeah, I don't know whether you've got any chemicals that you can drop in them to clear them up. But, uh, I would say, uh, the, just in working with them, it would help to, uh, be open to looking at, uh, a more open way of seeing design. I don't know what that means verbally yet. Uh, I'm working on it. And also, I'll just say one thing related to your work on Ojai's planning commission. It would be a mistake to, for you to have a rigid or strong view of what everything has to look like. Because then you're not really investing or anything in the talents that you have in Ojai. Or you might get from anywhere else coming into design. And also, I'd like you to think, what would your children or your children's children, what kind of a place will they be living in? And also, I'd like you to think, what would your children or your children's children, what kind of a place will they be living in? Uh, will it be, uh, jammed with people seeking, um, relief from LA from Thursday to Sunday evening? Or will it be a town where there are enough people here in the evening who live here and work here who can walk from their townhouse or their apartment right here? A block from here, two blocks from here, three blocks from here. I think if I was on the planning commission, I would be planning for any new population in the town of Ojai to be living within three blocks of the arcade. And that this would create a visual, uh, reality to a small town. It would still be a small-town character. You would still see the mountains. But you would, uh, you would have a population that wanted to listen to some music past nine fifteen in the evening. And even, you know, buy a glass of wine or a cup of coffee if they needed to stay awake. But I think we're, we need to think about, what will our children's children, how many of us live in Ojai? And I know, Lucas, I mean, it's just, I don't live in Ojai. I don't live in the town. But there are more of us living outside of Ojai who count Ojai as our town than live in the town. I'd like that reversed. And then think about what kind of a town we, we live in. It would be more, we wouldn't be jumping, having to jump in a car. I have to jump in a car to get home. And because I don't drive, I have my dear friend, Bill. So, uh, thank you anyway.
Thank you, thank you, Nick.
If I come up with some more words later, I'll share.
That's awesome. Just a point of clarity, if you don't mind, Lucas, just for my own edification. The purpose of these objective standards, this is not something that we came up with just as a, a fun exercise. This is something that the state has asked us to do, correct?
When you say ask, what you really mean is
State is forcing us to do this.
Correct.
Correct. So we don't really have, it's not, it wasn't our creative input that said, hey, let's make these really cool objective standards.
Yeah.
This was a state mandated thing.
Right.
And we have, what, five hundred cities in the state of California and they're all, all of them are have to go through this exercise.
Like five hundred and seventy-nine or something like that, yeah.
Five hundred and seventy-nine cities.
Yeah, so, don't quote me on that number. It's five seventy-something.
And the same rules apply to downtown Los Angeles as they do to downtown Ojai.
In terms of coming up with objective standards, yes.
Right.
Now, how you come up with those can still be unique to each community.
Correct.
That's, that, those are all true statements. And how, how we want to, you know, to, to come up with that is, is why we're here having the discussion tonight. And certainly why we'll be bringing forward an ordinance in the future, a draft ordinance in the future, so.
And, and another point of clarity, just so we, so it's on there, I mean, I know everybody already knows this, but city of Ojai, we have, what, seven thousand people roughly, maybe eight, eight thousand people?
Yeah, I mean, the census is showing about seventy, seventy-five hundred.
Seventy-five hundred, seventy-five hundred people. And the valley, the Ojai Valley, has probably close to thirty thousand, right, including Ojai.
Yeah, it's in between thirty and thirty-five probably, yeah.
There's much more in the valley than there is in the city.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, just, that was just point of clarity.
But the valley, we have no, we have no jurisdiction.
We have no jurisdiction over the
Ours is the four square miles.
That's the county that
Correct.
Okay.
Could you review for me the height limits that, that we have in Ojai currently and projected?
Yeah, so the height limits in the residential area is twenty-five feet. And that is measured from the, from the, from grade up to the, to the ridge. Yes, to the top. Not from the, not from where the, the roof starts, but from the top. Um, and it allows for two stories. For residential. These standards are also identifying the same thing, which is the two-story, twenty-five-foot height limitation.
Okay, now, to, I'm, I'm sorry to do this, but at the top of this page, it says, "Single and multifamily." Okay, so
Top of what page? Sorry.
I'm sorry. Attachment D, I think that's where we were.
Yep, attachment D. First page?
One of eleven. Top of the page.
Top of the page.
This is for residential, "Single and multifamily." So is if you had a
Which page are we on?
We're on attachment D, page one of eleven.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a very ti, it's the title.
At the title of it. It says, it's talking about
Single and multifamily.
And family. And so that's, I guess that's
That's deceiving.
Being confused about all of this.
The only way that it would be single family is if we were, if we were applying this to attract, attract development.
Okay, uh, thank you.
It's a typo.
But the perception is, yeah, from, from Taylor's standpoint, it, from the city attorney's standpoint, uh, it is a typo. We need to take "single" out. It just needs to say "multifamily."
Okay, cool. That, that actually is very much clearer. Thank you. Thank you.
Uh, another question on the same title, if you could. Uh, mixed use is VMU, not C1?
Yeah, one more, I got one more public comment. I'm sorry, what was that, Steve?
Second line, "Mixed use, not commercial zones." Are there any other mixed-use zones than VMU?
Oh, that's a good point. VMU.
The answer is no.
So this only means VMU?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, cool.
So that'll be a good clarification, another good clarification. Thank you.
And then before we get into discussion, uh, we had one more public comment. Larry, Larry Steingold?
Right.
Right at the, right at the wire, Larry, right at the wire.
Jim and Rob's is great for dinner. Our favorite place. Uh, thank you very much. Um, since I just got the, an insurance letter saying that I'm gonna be canceled or something, if things don't, I don't do this, are all the is, is it possible to vet all this stuff with this wildfire acre, this organization that the insurance companies are using to essentially inspect all our homes? Like to have all this stuff set up so that the insurance companies have approved the insuring of all these properties? Instead of some people getting sandbagged?
Aren't, isn't the fact that the insurance company is who is denying you? And we have multiple insurance companies, so
Well, they're denying me for, for reasons like, oh, eight feet of non, um, what do you call it, non-pervious. You know, no wood fences, no this, no that. Have all that stuff sort of pre-programmed into all this stuff so we don't have to reinvent the wheel so that people don't go, oh.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Like, you know, the, look, the, these are, these are not necessarily R regs, but this is what we're seeing. We wanna make sure that every tiny home, ADU, has eight feet
Same fire standards.
But three feet be, or it's like the Eves plus five feet.
Right, and I think the, some of the general guidelines, like ten feet between structures.
So, but it's beyond that. It's like no wood connecting fences, no, no this, and I know it's gonna kick up the cost because I already know this. And, you know, so we, we need to have all that stuff in place so people don't come in and go, oh, this is what I'm planning, and you go, oh, no, you we can't prohibit it, but you should be aware, but maybe we can prohibit it to say, hey, we're making everything fire-safe, so why not just go to the extra trouble of making the tiny homes, the ADUs? All this stuff already blessed by the insurance companies, cause if they can't get insurance, they're not gonna be affordable. Anyway.
Yeah, good point. So, Lucas, that's a, that's a good question. Um, are we looking at fire standards and fire safety into our code as well? I mean, I, so that's probably more of the BAB than anything, but
I mean, fencing, that seems to be a logical place to put in.
Or, or lot, 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 uh, setbacks and
Larry actually brings up an interesting point. Uh, and here, here's the
Wow.
Did it, Larry.
Hey, a first. We got it.
No one's keeping track, though, but that's one.
We have not, we have not necessarily done the deep dive into it, but we can certainly look at, and really what it boils down to is are these standards, standards that have been in play for a long time? Or are they standards that are like a goalpost? They just constantly are changing, right? Cause if that's the case, then it becomes a little bit tougher, right? So, but if it's a standard by which they could live with for the next hundred years, am I done talking?
You're done talking.
Then here's the, the reality is, is it's probably a no. If they're moving the goalpost on a regular basis, it's a tough objective standard to bake in and then identify that that objective standard, guess what? It's changed.
Or even if the different insurance companies are using the same standard.
Can we open it up for Larry to come back up?
Well, it's up to you. It's up to the, to the commission.
I'm okay, but I wanna make sure
I will send you the website that Fireman's, Fireman's?
Farm Marshal.
One of them, Farmers.
Oh, Farmers Insurance.
Farmers sent me that is sort of like, I don't know. A lot of the insurance companies are using this questionnaire to get you certified. And it's things like, you know, things that the city can't get involved in cause it's personal. But there may be some things that can be used as design standards, like, hey, no wood connecting fences.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Um, five feet impervious surface, eight feet impervious surface. Because we're doing that now with CAL FIRE, FIRE, these other, everybody's running around going, sure, so why don't we sort of do what they ask, suggest and put those standards in? Because they're already telling everybody, you should do this because we wanna do it, so all new construction will be. You know.
So here, yeah, to Larry's point, and tha, thank you.
You're welcome.
Send me, send me the stuff. Uh, we can take a look at it, but I, to be fair, I can't make any promises, but I can promise you that we'll look into it.
Yeah, no.
And if anything, it would probably become its own heading and then have those, 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 those specific objective pieces. The quantitative pieces that he's talking about.
Strongly recommend that you check with the various major, uh, insurance companies because they may have different requests.
That's, and that's the challenge that I'm, I'm partially having. That's why I wouldn't necessarily label it as insurance. I would do it something like fire hardening or something like that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Fire mitigation or
Fire, yeah, something, something along those lines.
That's good. Um, okay, cool. Yeah, I mean, obviously, we're surrounded by high severity fires, so that would make a lot of sense to have that in our, our standards.
But just to, just to remind this commission, and I think we did it at one of the meetings recently, um, the high fires severity zones are only in the very northern portions and the very, in the very southern. Round us, yes, but in terms of being in our, in our jurisdiction
No.
Yeah, only in the very hot, in the very northern portions and the very southern tip, so.
That was a big question when I was on the building appeals board. Who is delineating where the wildfire zones are? And there were some who thought it was really the whole city. So.
That's a CAL FIRE question.
Yeah.
CAL FIRE defines it.
Yeah, they, they set the maps.
Yeah.
Okay, cool. I think, um, now that we're done with public comment, we are on to discussion. Judy, you wanna talk about some stuff?
Uh, are we gonna go through these one at a time, or are we, we've been kind of jumping around?
Yeah, we have been, we
Do we need to go through it?
We did, we did start with, um, because Steve, um, had quite a few questions. I wanted to make sure we addressed all of those, so.
This document that we received from the
Yeah, we could talk about that.
HDF had several
So, would you like to
Several suggestions.
Would you like to talk about that document?
Yeah, for sure, yeah, absolutely.
Um, yeah, obviously, they are not the state requirements, but
Think they're a nonprofit organization?
How much do we need to take this into account to make sure that we are meeting the state requirements?
Yeah, so I think it's important to, to understand that theirs are um, based on factual pieces of the code. And when I say code, I mean government code. And, um, on top of that, there are some of, some of our standards that we've got in here as a draft. They're correct. That some of these things need to be changed or beefed up or just revised altogether. Question is, is, do we use this as a model to make the revisions? In addition to the comments that come in tonight, as well as the comments that have come in from the community standpoint? Um, do we ignore these? I would suggest that we do not ignore these.
Right.
Um, given the parameters and severity of the letter itself. Not the first time we've seen a letter from this group.
Right.
And probably not the last.
Yep.
Um, so we certainly encourage and appreciate the information that's, that's brought forward and looking at it carefully. And I'll just leave it at that.
Okay. Are we in, we're in discussion now.
Yeah, we're in discussion.
We're absolutely in discussion.
We are.
Um, I really liked what I heard from the community, from, from Nick and from Bill about maintaining the um, individuality, the artistic uh, possibilities that our architecture would like today and in the future. Um, the Temecula uh, document that you sent us that spelled out all of the different architectural styles and how many pieces you had to meet in order to pass their co, just began to feel like a cookie cutter to me. And I, I don't know that that's what Ojai really wants to be. So I don't know where to take it from there. I, I also don't think we're big enough to have a whole section of town be craftsman style or whatever.
Do you think it would be helpful? We can, we can finish some of the discussion today. I think there's some things that you can flesh out. But then, put a pin in it, we'll try to find cities of similar size that are, that are more akin to what Ojai is, for you to look at as examples? Cause I always feel like it's easier to, to redline somebody else's, to edit somebody else's work than to start from scratch, right? And right now, it kind of feels like we have to eat a whole elephant, and so I think it might be helpful to look at other jurisdictions and see if we can get some smaller city examples for you to give input. But I think there's a couple of things that we could, you could probably still do today and give feedback so that Lucas can start working on a better draft in collaboration with our office. Would that be good?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Very preliminary, right, for us too.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not looking for a rubber stamp here at all.
Yeah, I was so confused when I was reading this about who it was affecting, that I, I must say.
Yeah.
Now I need to reread it.
The fact that, look, the fact that this is being mandated on every city, including our community, and that we're not immune to it. Um, and that we have examples out there, but just to be fair, not all cities have done this at this point.
Right.
So, I'll be looking at su, you know, cities of similar size and see, and we'll see if, if um, Solvang and Buellton and other cities of that.
Done this.
Maybe Lompok, see if they've got something, um, maybe Nopomo, see if they have something that is, uh, that's palatable that we can, we can turn to, to look at.
One more
Have they been through this process already? Yeah.
One more foolish question, I guess. Um, but do does the fact that we meet arena numbers, hopefully soon, um, change any of this? Okay.
I might add too about the, the cities and design requirements. A lot of times larger cities have more resources to throw at being compliant right away. So we might have to be open to opportunities from some of the bigger cities. Even, and then right-size it for what Ojai is.
Right, that makes, that makes sense.
Looking at cities who, maybe, maybe it's San Francisco. Uh, Long Beach has a lot of historical districts there. We can maybe look that opportuni, same with San Diego. Where they do have spaces, even though the whole city isn't that way, um, that have the architectural integrity and integrity is not the right word, uniqueness, right, that Ojai does. So, we might have to open up our opportunities in looking at other ordinances because it's possible that the other, Lucas made an excellent point. Other cities are going through exactly what we are right now in this moment.
Right.
Beginning stages.
Yeah. Yeah.
Everybody struggling with this?
Look, it almost feels like to a certain degree, sorry to keep talking here.
No, it's good.
It almost feels like to a certain degree, maybe we should have said like 2025. But I think the negotiation piece, when we were working through HCD and the individual we were working with wouldn't budge on some of this stuff. And the 2024 was one that they weren't willing to budge on, so.
And, and I did want to call out too, just to make for, you know, the public is that weren't we, were we one of the first in Ventura County to hit our, to, to get our HCD?
Compliance.
Compliant? One of the first.
Certification.
You're talking about the arena numbers?
Yeah. Well, not, not to hit arena numbers, but to get our, our housing element compliant with HCD.
Oh, we weren't the first. So I think we were like the third, we're like third or, yeah, like kind of almost in the middle of the pack, right?
It's pretty impressive.
Yes, because there are still cities out there, lots of, yeah, there's lots of cities out there that are still clamoring, trying to figure out how they're addressing it. And we're 2024, like we're almost halfway through the, the sixth cycle. And still, cities are like trying to, to get certification. It's almost a joke at this point.
Yeah.
Not that HCD is a joke, but that the fact that you're trying to get compliance and it's four years, almost four years past, so.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Cool.
Another suggestion, John?
Oh, go ahead, we're in discussion, go ahead.
Yeah. I, I would have to go back through the 99 pages of Temecula, I think, or whatever it was there. But I do not recall seeing something that might be called mid-century. And that's stucco, but, but not smooth stucco on the outside. Small eaves in general. Sometimes gables, sometimes hip, but mostly gabled roofs. Is there a category, an architectural category like that? That, that you envision being in these objective design standards? Because I walk around the city a lot and I see an awful lot of these, these homes that were clearly built in the late 40s to the late 50s, say. And, and they are of a common type. Not that these objective standards are going to apply to them, because this is all going forward. But we should have, I think, something in that area as well. Not just mission revival, not just Spanish, not just craftsman. There's probably something that should be modern as well. And, and then have these objective standards that apply to each of those styles.
I think to, to Chair Qualisi's point, the style and standard in the 40s and 50s is reminiscent of what they, what was referred to as, as post-war.
Yeah, post-war.
Which is like a single-story, low roof, typically a hip, not usually gable, sometime mansard. But it's a, it's a low roof style and mostly single-story. I don't know that there's a whole lot of post-war that's two-story. Because then it transforms into a different style, architectural style. The post-war piece is, is an interesting one because you see that throughout Southern California and I would say throughout the United States. The mid-century modern style is more into the 60s, more than likely. And on top of that, has, has a completely different style from, from windows to roof pitch, to, to even the placement of the door. So it's, it's definitely in single-story in almost every case that I can think of. Two-story almost seems divided unless you're looking at like a Frank Lloyd Wright. So there's, huh, there's, you know what would be kind of interesting with this is if, if I just did a quick, if we had staff do a quick cursory of the design styles that exist within, within the city? And say, look, we've got a dozen different architectural design styles. We're looking at pulling objective standards for these three, and this is for, for the following reasons. That might actually be an effective and useful exercise. It helps to give clarity to this body, probably the community to a certain degree. This is in a big city, so it's not like we're going to be doing that for hours upon hours. It's a quick window survey.
Yeah, and, and I bet if you look at when these buildings were constructed, you could probably find a similar theme.
Yeah.
For example, the homes that were built in the 50s, or the ones that were in the 60s, or the 70s, or in the 80s. The homes that were in the 80s are quite different than the homes that were built in the 50s and the 40s.
Exactly, exactly.
Yeah, there was a, there was a study done of the city some years ago now, but it identified 22 different neighborhoods.
Hold on, you're talking about Sargent Town Planning, right?
Could be, yes, I don't recall the name.
Yeah, I have that study.
That might be a place to start.
Yeah, that one was never adopted through city council, but certainly one that had done quite a bit of research. So I've, I mean, I have access to that, we might be start with, start there.
Could be helpful, right?
Right.
Could we go to the density issue? Page 11?
Good job, Judy.
Well, HDF hit it pretty hard, so I think it's something we need to kind of talk about. The, the whole thing, for example, there shall be no more than six dwelling units in any one building. And Temecula is, I read that in their, in their stuff also. Where does that come from? And how would our Bryant Street project violate that particular clause?
So I just want to preface this with, you see how those, those numbers are all in red?
Yes, okay.
Those were all in draft form.
Iffy.
And obviously, the letter that we're looking at here caught on to that as well.
Yeah, the, why would we limit the number?
Well, what we can do is we can identify a number. What we cannot do is identify a number that, that downzones or takes a density and reduces that density.
Reduce from what? Where, are you losing me?
Okay, so for instance, yeah, so whatever our, whatever our standards are within that applicable zone, we've got to make sure that those standards are not reduced.
Okay.
So across the board, there could be areas where that's okay. But the problem is, is that when, within our higher density areas, that is not okay. So you hit on it on one of the projects. There are a number of projects that have gone through this process and could go through the process in the future, which wouldn't meet this. So immediately, it takes a, what is already an established density, and it turns it into this being the new norm. And the objective standards aren't meant to do that. They're meant to provide clarity from a quantitative standpoint. It's not meant to say, oh, we can take the density and reduce it.
So you're looking at density in each of the different kind of zoning.
Correct.
Areas.
So I would, I would say this.
But SPL override, I mean, because that's in a business industrial, commercial industrial zone, but it has an SPL overlay. So does the SPL overlay override any?
The basic zoning, yes.
Yes, the basic, so there's the base zone, which within, let's just say, for instance, there's, there's the commercial ones and there's the manufacturing, that's your base zone. So if you're only working under that premise, those are the standards.
X number.
If you're using the overlay, then you apply those standards. So for instance, our SPL allows for a higher density.
Twenty per.
And in certain cases, multifamily, and in certain cases, mixed use.
Okay, so this whole thing is really not.
I would say this.
Relevant.
About 12 in the density that you're seeing there. Strike it out, because it does need to be modified and/or even just removed altogether.
And, because each zone does have its own density.
Correct.
Right, already.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah. It's, it doesn't, I'll just, I'll just tell you. The numbers were in there as a, as a test case.
Okay.
And I don't, I didn't mean for those numbers to come out.
Yeah.
But they're out.
Yeah.
And so now we get to talk about how they're not good.
Okay, okay.
I guess I.
Yeah, the 3,500 square feet and then the, the.
Yeah, I mean that.
As a minimum is, is crazy. I mean, with the.
Well, not that crazy.
SPL nine. And the possibility of four units, dwelling units on one property.
Six, I think it says six.
Certainly, that 3,500 square feet for each dwelling unit just doesn't.
Yeah, each, each, okay, so.
Yeah.
Uh, think about, think about density, like, for instance, the Village Mixed Use sits at fifty, about, about 5,500 per unit. So in larger lots, you start looking at how, what that density, how that density unpacks. There was a project on Montgomery that applied that and then recognized that there was going to have to be more density in order for it to fit the parameters. And this body and city council ended up moving forward with it for reasons that were beyond what, what could be done. But through a PDP, it was allowed to, to move forward, a plan development permit. These numbers just don't add up, to be fair.
Right.
They were out there for discussion, they weren't really meant to be out here for this discussion.
Okay.
But ended up out here for this discussion. So it's just, I think it's actually a good exercise to, to identify what not to do in this case, so.
Well, then I, I think that, you know, we'll, we'll go through.
And this, and this group certainly identified that.
They really highlighted each and every.
Very thorough.
Area we have to look at, attractive, long-lasting materials. Well.
The other one I wanted to call out, and just for my own clarity, was number 11. In the document, it was mentioned that that conflicts with state law, but does it?
For number 11?
Yeah.
You're talking about space, accessory buildings may occupy.
Specifically the rear yard, the set, yeah, the setbacks.
Oh, we're, are you talking about the, for the letter?
Yeah, from the letter. The letter was on page three of seven, conflict with state ADU law.
It was like, we commissioners need to do a little more reading and a little more markup for you.
So here's the, uh, we had an interesting debate amongst staff members the other day, and it was regarding, because ADU law continues to change, and I was just opening up the, the book this, earlier this week. And I, we have a book that any of the changes that have come forward in state law are italicized and typically highlighted or bolded. So I saw that there was, there were new provisions. I'm like, oh, there's new provisions, what do these new provisions say? And it talks about lot coverage not being a deterrent to the size of the ADU. But then we had a conflict with an existing accessory structure that's not an ADU. And we, we were debating on whether that lot coverage would then be incorporated or wouldn't be incorporated. This, this is getting to whether an accessory structure is an accessory ADU or is just an accessory, an accessory building. And the two of them are separate. And I'm not sure that I read quite the same way that they are.
Yeah, they're.
In terms of their, their, their information. I need to do a little bit more research on our ADU law to see if that really does hold merit.
Well, and, and.
Because in, in some cases, it, it can go to a certain degree and others, there's a, there's an intent. And some of that intent is, is baked into the guidelines that HCD has put together. So.
Yeah, no, that makes sense. And, and I guess I'm wondering if the.
Sorry, I'm, I'm only being as clear as I can because we deal with this on a daily basis with ADU law.
Yeah, and, and I guess to, to be clear, is 11, is it, is it, are we talking about ADUs or are we talking about accessory buildings?
It's meant to be accessory buildings.
That's different than ADUs, right?
Yeah, and I don't see anywhere in here it says ADUs.
Nothing that, it's nothing about.
So that's why I'm confused.
Yeah. And they call it out that it's ADU.
Yeah, they're immediately assuming ADU law, which.
An accessory building is not an ADU. It's like an, it's just like another building.
By the plain language, an ADU is, is, is a form of accessory building. But the reverse is not true.
Well, one's a, one's a building, the other is a dwelling unit. Accessory dwelling unit.
Okay, yeah.
Accessory building.
You could, you could call a garage an accessory building, I guess.
Yeah, you could call it, or shed.
Turn it to an ADU.
Yeah, you could call a shed or a barn, an accessory building.
Absolutely.
True too, true too.
Call a spade a spade, yeah, I, look, the. We'll, we'll be looking at this letter closely.
Yeah, no, I love it.
And some of it will likely be on the same page, others may, may not be.
Yeah, yeah.
But, yeah.
Yeah, okay, good stuff.
It's not a letter, letter from the legislature.
Here's, here's my question for this body.
Yeah.
The 11 pages that we have here, in terms of the depth and the information that's being provided here, are we hitting the mark from that standpoint?
Yes.
Given there are a lot of issues with it. I think what we're likely going to do is when we go back to the drawing board, we're going to take a look at a couple of other cities of similar size.
Yeah.
And comparing some apples-to-apples pieces there and seeing what we can pull from that. But also recognizing that some, some deeper dive window survey pieces from a design standpoint to see really what's out there, using maybe the Sargent Town Planning document that was, that's out there. Although it hasn't ever really been adopted, it still is raw data that we can.
What is the name of that?
Sargent Town Planning. It went before planning commission before I was here. I want to say maybe 2018, 17?
Sargent Plan Document.
It was just never adopted by city council. But still serves as a resource.
Yeah, and I also think taking a, a survey of the lot sizes that we have and looking at where those lot sizes are condensed and where they expand and when those buildings were built on those lot sizes. I think you'll find the older ones are in the middle and the newer ones are on the perimeters.
Yeah, it's like an onion, right?
Yeah.
Most cities.
Yeah.
Probably the most, the most common lot size in the city is 50 by 150.
Definitely with the, within the VMU and any of that downtown area, likely has that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it'd be interesting to have a, a survey of those lots. And then, you know, if that's your baseline, where you start from the, the most dense areas, you know, for this density conversation. And then you kind of expand out, like, you know, expand the onion, so to speak.
Sure.
Be a good baseline.
Gives us some context, right?
Yeah, it gives us some context, exactly.
I've seen data from staff, and I remember it was before Lucas was here or after, that said there are X number of lots of a given size and several different size ranges in the city. There's what, total of 3,000 or 3,500 parcels in the city? Something like that. And there, and there was a count of parcels of various sizes and I presume the dimensions go with those. That data is out there somewhere, Lucas.
It is. It is, and I, it was actually under my, it was when I first started here. Because we were talking, it was during the Title X discussions, we were having a philosophical discussion about lot size and.
Right.
It then caused me to go back and, and talk to staff about whether or not we have some Excel documents. So there is an Excel document out there that, that, that can get us that data.
Yeah, and, and to answer your point, Lucas, I, I do believe that we're on the right path. Because I mean, looking through the guideline of the what's to do during, you know, the, the League of Cities, the, and how to meet these objective standards. I think we're, yeah, what you've outlined is starting to hit all of this stuff. You know, counts and measures, I see a lot of metrics in here, ratios and calculations, you've got lists. So it's much clearer, you know, and less like subjective.
One thing, as long as this body is okay with, with it, I would like to provide more illustrations.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea, absolutely.
Not necessarily pretty it up, but definitely provide some, something that is less wordy and has something that's more readable.
I mean, I do like pretty pictures.
Yeah, I, look, I think there's, there's an opportunity there and I think there's definitely some good examples that we can plug in here, so.
All right.
I agree with John, I think you've hit the right level of detail.
Yeah.
We'll argue about the details for a while, but you've hit the right, I think, the right sweet spot between too much micromanaging and too vague. So congratulations on that.
Yeah, and I loved, I loved hearing the input from, from the public around, you know, don't get too into the weeds, give us some creative flexibility, you know, to have an eclectic town like we do.
Yeah, stay away from Temecula is what you're saying. That's what I heard.
Be careful, yeah, I guess, you know, be careful.
That's fine.
Too cookie cutter.
I like visiting Temecula.
And, and what we're really talking about is objective design standards for the maybe two or three or four homes each year into the future that might be permitted in the city. So we're not going to change the city drastically, no matter what this document says.
Well, yeah, it's just a paste on, yeah, supply and demand, right?
Well, it's, it's also governs future behavior.
Right, yep, for sure. Okay, well, um, anything else? Do we wrap this one up? All right, I think we're done with discussion number two. I think that was, uh, Lucas, did you get what you needed from us?
I got more than I needed, yes. I'm like a sponge right now. I'm looking forward, looking forward to unpacking it and then bringing something back in the future. We do have a deadline of 2024, at the end of this year, so it's definitely going to be coming back, probably by the end of the summer. Is the, that's probably what we'll lean towards.
Okay, cool. Um, all right, well, we'll move on to future agenda items. Do we have anything coming up here that we want to talk about?
Okay, so June 19th, we have two items coming forward. One is 1440 Daily. Um, this body saw this item come forward in 2019, maybe 20, early 2020.
Remind me, which one is that one?
So it's, it's a single-family residence, uh, at the very northern tip, top of Daly Road.
Okay, okay.
vacant lot, um, zoned ag. So that one will be coming forward for, um, discussion and consideration. It is a public hearing item. There are notices going out, so the communities, you can expect this to be.
Is that the one that has the public access to the trial house?
Uh, so we'll talk about that. Not going to get into the details on it. We'll talk about that when this comes forward on the 19th. The second item, I don't want to get into the details on it or start, um, giving out too much information without the full public here. The second one is the tiny house, um, ordinance, and this is round three, which will have a draft ordinance, um, as a part of this. And that's really feeding off of the great, um, information and deliberation that we've had the last two meetings, so. July 3rd, as long as this body is okay, there's a recommendation just to cancel that meeting.
It's okay.
I'm fine with that.
There's nothing that's absolutely pending, um, that needs to be heard on the 3rd, so.
Mr. Quillsey?
I, I agree, cancel the 3rd.
There's nothing on for the 17th at this point, but any of these items that you're seeing that are pending, um, and even items that have come on recently could very well be scheduled for the 17th. So I, I don't anticipate canceling the 17th. I think we'll have, we'll have something for you.
A lot of pending stuff.
Yeah, and just so you're aware, the pending stuff is stuff that's close. There's stuff also out there that's in the incompleteness world that we're waiting to hear back before, um, we put it on pending and get it, get it ready for, for this body.
Yeah, okay. Cool, all right, um, uh, director's report, Lucas, anything?
No, I think I've, I've said enough tonight. There are, uh, hold on, I do want to make one, one announcement, and I'm not sure if I mentioned this at the last meeting, but we were trending towards, so we did unfortunately say goodbye to one of our planning aides who ended up, uh, parting. But it opened the door for the intern that we had on staff here, who we've offered a planning aid position, and he has accepted. So he starts on July 7th, um, and will be here. The interesting thing and probably the amazing thing is he's local. He grew up here. It's almost like a unicorn of sorts that you actually have a planner that grew up here that wants to work here. So we're, we're kind of blessed, um, from that standpoint, and I, I think we're looking forward. I've already been working with him, um, when he was the intern here, does great work. There'll be more information when he starts here and he's sitting next to me.
Awesome.
All right.
Very cool, very good, love it. Uh, commission reports, anything?
No.
No, Steve?
Nothing for me, thank you.
Was there a MAC, was there a MAC meeting recently?
I don't know, I'm not sure.
I went to one, but I reported on it.
You reported last time, right? Okay, okay. All right, good deal.
Okay, well, we, our council liaison, I believe is Suzha. I don't know if she's online.
Nope.
No raised hand, nothing, okay, good deal. All right, well, I guess with, uh, five minutes to eight, we will call this meeting adjourned.